May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? Please clear the aisles, take your seats. Finish talking. As there is no quorum requirement, the Chair calls to order the first adjourned session of the 2019 Springtown Meeting at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being broadcast live on the Groton Channel. It is also being videotaped for rebroadcast and posting on the Internet. In addition, it is being audiotaped for record-keeping purposes. When you checked in, you should have received a purple voter card. Please be sure you have this card. Do not lose it. You will need it in the event we need to do a hand count. Please be sure you have your warrant and information packet from out front. Please take this time to silence your electronic devices. The Chair prefers to set his to airplane mode, which is a note to the people at home who call when the broadcast goes out. Please call the Town Manager, not the Moderator. Voters may sit in any available seat except the last two rows, which are reserved for guests and non-voters. Non-voters are asked to remain seated and quiet during the proceedings and silent during voting. If a voter wishes to address the meeting, please proceed to the nearest microphone and wait to be called on by the Chair. While it is not a legal requirement, you may, if you wish, give your name and address. Last week, in the first session, the meeting adopted a three-minute time limit on voter remarks. That limit is in effect for tonight. Mr. Cataldo is our timekeeper. At two minutes, he will give the yellow flag, and at the final third minute, he will give the red flag, at which point the Chair will ask you to finish up. In the last meeting, for the last session, we completed Articles 1 through 7, which is a bit deceptive because it comprised of 22 main motions. Tonight, we have Articles 8 through 36, which comprise of 24 main motions. The Chair expects to finish our business this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, as Article 8 relates to funding for the library roof project, it is also related to Article 12, Motion 5, which seeks CPA funding for the library roof. As such, a better course would be to consider Article 8 and Article 12, Motion 5 consecutively. If there are no objections, the Chair will postpone action on Article 8 until immediately after Article 12. Is that clear? Are there any objections? Article 8 is postponed until after Article 12, and we will now move to Article 9. Ms. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is this on? Yes, good, okay. I move that the town vote to increase the local room occupancy excise pursuant to Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, from 3% to 6%. Said rate to take effect on or after July 1st, 2020.
Article 9 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Pine.
Yes, you may remember that a year ago, at town meeting, we accepted the Massachusetts law to allow the town to collect a tax on hotel room rentals. However, in order to support the new Groton Inn in their first years of operation, we agreed to implement the tax gradually, starting with a 3% rate, and that will go into effect this coming July. We voted that a year ago to start in July of 19 at 3%. The plan was, at that point, to do what we are doing now, asking you to vote to raise that to 6% to begin in July of 2020. This is one of the few sources of revenue that the town has other than the property tax. 6% is the maximum allowed by the state under the law, and pretty much all of our surrounding towns are charging 6% already. The Select Board and the Finance Committee both support this unanimously, and we urge you to vote in favor.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 9? It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 9 passes by a majority vote. Article 10, Mrs. Menugian.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact legislation that would authorize the Town of Groton to collect a tax in an amount to be set by the Select Board, but not to exceed 5% on purchases of tickets for admission to any live performance or event in venues located in the Town of Groton, which legislation shall be substantially in the form as set forth in the warrant for the 2019 Springtown Meeting, and to authorize the Select Board to approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded, Mrs. Menugian.
So this is a request to move to the Legislature and ask them for permission to implement a ticket tax. The ticket tax will be up to 5% on live performances by a professional within their professional field in venues seating more than 200 people. Right now, this is permission from the Legislature. They allow cities to do this. They do not allow towns to do this. Basically, in my perspective, this is one of the new revenue opportunities that we hear folks asking for, and as such, we are requesting this. It's not something that we anticipate is going to bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars, but every little bit helps, and this gives us the ability to enact this kind of tax, very similar to meals tax or the room tax. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. The Chair is aware that there is a request for primary opponent presentation by Representative Sheila Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard on this particular article, Article 10, as it relates to the Town of Groton bringing before the legislation the ability to tax nonprofits as well as other entities if they fit within certain criterion. Now, I had the opportunity to review one of the Selectmen's meetings recently, and I know there are some people that say, "No, it's really not just for Indian Hill," but throughout that hearing on April 8th, it was repeatedly said that it really is about Indian Hill. So when I first heard about this, because it would be such a groundbreaking type of thing for a town to levy a tax, a sales tax in effect, on ticket pricing against a nonprofit, I started to ask some questions within the Legislature and the State House at large. I initially spoke to someone in the leadership team of the Ways and Means Committee of House Ways and Means, and he said this would never go through, it would never pass in Ways and Means, it would never make it to the Chamber floor. He said it's been a long recognized policy that you don't tax nonprofits. You don't cause them to raise their tickets to pay taxes, you don't tax them. It's a zero-tax type of proposition when it comes to nonprofits. And I think the word he used was no legislator worth their salt would ever vote for this particular article. I then spoke to both House Counsel, excuse me, first the House Clerk, and he indicated to me that he would likely send the bill, if it got to him, he would send the bill to the Committee on Revenue. And he said, "And I believe it would stop then." And I was sort of taken aback, but I took him at his word. He said we would never pass a bill that would in any way tax nonprofits. I then spoke to the Chairman of the Revenue Committee, and before I had finished even telling him the entire warrant article or the essence of the article, he interrupted me and said, "I'd kill that." I was taken aback, started laughing, and he said, "Well, no, we would have a hearing, but I see no way that we would not kill that. It is so, it goes so much against social policy, both at the federal level, at the state level, you do not tax nonprofits." I met with my colleague in the Senate, Senator Edward Kennedy, who has the first middle sex Senate, including Groton, and he said to me that, at one point in time, he believed the city of Lowell tried to do something similar. And he said it didn't get anywhere because it stopped immediately with either House Counsel or Senate Counsel saying, "You can't do that." I had forgotten that most often bills are, maybe always, I only find out if there's an issue with one of mine, they go to House Counsel once you file them. And the House Counsel then makes sure that the bill is in order and that the bill is one that we can put through to be, go through the process through committee hearings and such. He said that all attempts that have ever been made in this nature have died on arrival, that they will not allow a municipality to tax nonprofits. He said there have been greater efforts to tax the foundations of rather large nonprofits, tax the real estate for nonprofits such as, I think he said Harvard University, who owns so much land in the city of Cambridge, but he said, "But the general rule prevails, that we do not tax nonprofits." He actually went on to tell me that constitutionally, cities and towns have no power, no independent power to levy taxes. In fact, Section 2 of Article 2 of the Constitution of the Commonwealth says, which is the Home Rule Amendment section, makes it clear that municipalities cannot levy, assess, or collect taxes. He told me their purview of taxation is simply real estate and excise taxes, never sales taxes. This, and as he heard it, he said, "This is clearly a sales tax, and the current state law specifically requires," he said, "I don't know if this was taken into consideration, but current state law specifically requires that all proceeds from the collection of a sale tax must be remitted to the Commissioner of Revenue." So if, in fact, we were to do that, a significant percentage of the proceeds of that sales tax is already designated by statute and, I believe, by regulation as well. For instance, 16% of any sales tax has to be dedicated to funding of the MBTA. Another 16% of the sales tax must be dedicated to the building, to the funding of the Mass School Building Authority, and there may be others that I'm unaware of. The dedicated funding of a sales tax makes this a much more nuanced argument. I don't know that we've even taken into consideration the fact that if, in fact, we do this, and I do believe it is targeted towards Indian Hill, and the reason I believe it to be so is that if you look at the criterion as to who we're going to tax, it's not going to fit that many other entities. There may be rare outlier occasions, but it's mainly going to be, as the Selectmen said in that meeting, it's mainly geared to Indian Hill. I can tell you, as a, what he did say is the town could avail themselves to the local option that is, has been legislated for the meals tax, and that's, that if the town is looking for revenue, that that may possibly be a source of revenue. What I've heard from some people is that Indian Hill owes us something, don't they? Well, I'd like you to know that I've done some investigation on that, and Indian Hill has paid over a half a million dollars in fees, in permitting fees, to the Town of Groton. Now, permitting fees are not a source of revenue, like tax revenue, but fees instead are for a service to be rendered, meaning that inspection services would be paid for, inspection services by the Town of Groton for the building of this facility. Because of the scope of this project, they fall within the Construction Control Act in Massachusetts, and there are, as I've been told, about 150 engineers and architects on site almost every single day. In addition, those entities who have expertise in the area of the Construction Act, excuse me, Construction Control Act, are there inspecting. So actually, when I, in my life as a lawyer, we take retainer fees because we're going to render services. Well, before I can spend those fees or take those fees of my own, I need to show that I did the work. I did the work that entitled me to those fees. So I don't know what the numbers are, but if the town has already gotten a half a million dollars, I don't know whether they've substantiated, how they've exercised the release of those fees in consideration of the work that has had to be done by the town. If you take those fees out as something for a service the town's going to provide, then you are calling it a state, a type of revenue. So why does the town, why does Indian Hill owe us a fee just to be able to be here? A half a million dollars. Can you imagine if you went to buy your house in Groton and they said, "Well, there's a fee if you want to live here, just to be part of this town?" I believe it to be wrong, I believe it to be ill-advised, and I would not agree to it. I, I know that I'm probably running out of time, so I'll, I'll try to, am I running out of time?
Mr. Cataldo.
One minute, okay, let me talk as fast as I can. The fact that the federal and the state governments have always held this fact that you don't tax nonprofits was not by mistake. It's a well-thought-out social policy. I have served on the boards of several nonprofits, including performing arts profits, and I can tell you there's one thing in common to all nonprofits, and that is that they all are trying to do something good, trying to do something good for society, the community at large, whether they're in education, healthcare, or the performing arts. I've also been involved in at least three performing arts types of boards, and I can tell you that in every board that I've been on of that nature, we have to find a sweet spot for ticketing, because if you go over that sweet spot, you will not get the patrons. So there is a way that you have to balance what you're going to charge with how many people you need to get to the event to cover your costs. If they have to inflate the ticket fee just so that they can pay the Town of Groton this tax, this will not wear well on them. And in the alternative, if they take it out of their proceeds of their tickets, they may not be able to cover their costs. The new building is going to be such an educational, cultural, and economic benefit to this area, and I would ask you to support it fully, and when we try to get revenue, I say we continue to refuse to take that revenue on the backs of our nonprofit organizations. There are other ways, like I said, the local option, meals tax, but with regard to nonprofits, I believe it is wrong, and I oppose this article. Thank you.
You have a committee report? Mr. Green, did you want to give a committee report? I had that on my notes from last week, but... Mr. Robertson for the FinCom.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The FinCom voted 1 for, 5 against, with one absenteeism, I mean one abstention. The primary reason for the 5 against vote was that we felt there was not enough information available to make an informed decision. There was not any financials available, there was not any, the name of the venues available, there was no information on who, in fact, other than Indian Hill would be, would be affected by this. There was also, what was the last three years, what would this have meant for the town, what was the forecast going forward? There was no information available for that. There may be now, but there was none when we looked at this a couple weeks ago. So due to the fact that there was no information out there, we felt that this was way early, if ever, to go into, and maybe in time, if in fact the information comes up and it says this is something that makes sense for the following reason, you know, and there's no legal issue downtown in the State House, may go forward, but right now, it's just not prime time in our view.
Okay, we'll now open the floor for debate in the back, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir, in the back.
Bart Salmon, Sunset Farm, Farmers Row. I think this is premature. You've got to give Indian Hill a chance. That seems to be the target. We have a bed and breakfast, which has events. We have had an event, over 200 people, nonprofit. It seems like we might fall under this, ill-conceived. I move the motion.
Thank you for the commentary. It is inappropriate. Quiet, please. Quiet, please. The Chair is speaking. No one speaks when the Chair speaks. It is out of order to attempt to make a motion to move the question after having spoken on the main motion on the floor. We'll now go to the next speaker, Mrs. Menugian.
I don't think I will ever get used to being called Mrs. Menugian. So to me, as an individual anyway, this is not intended to target Indian Hill, just as a rooms tax came to be when we had rooms all of the sudden. This is a ticket tax, to me, that is envisioned because we will suddenly be having tickets. I think that this could be authorized by the Legislature potentially as an excise tax, much as the meals and room tax are. To me, requesting discussion with the Legislature around this is the first step. I have no personal objection. I'm happy to put myself out there to look for this kind of revenue. I think it's unfortunate when the state not only doesn't meet their own revenue promises, but then continues to restrict what we can do as a community. We're really being put in a difficult position, so I, for one, am happy to go forward on the cutting edge of things.
Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I deferred my position on whether to support or not support this article until town meeting. I wish to announce that I do not support Article 10. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir.
Jeff Wallens, Lowell Road. I do support this article. I have no illusions that this is going to be approved by the Legislature. The purpose of bringing this forward is to call the Legislature's attention to a real problem, which is the problem of what do we do with nonprofits and our tax base? In Groton, I think that the two schools have property worth $200,000, $300,000. We have one of them that has an endowment in the tens of millions, another with an endowment in the hundreds of millions. This is a problem for us. We need sources of revenue, and I think it is appropriate for us to raise this issue to the Legislature in this fashion, even if it's going to go nowhere. Thank you.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Carolyn Perkins. And I, I met with, at one of the Select Board meetings, I did raise concerns about the negative impact this would have on nonprofits in town, particularly small nonprofits like the Groton History Center. I have seen since then that you made some changes, but one of the changes, it still concerns me, it says that in a venue of the capacity of 200. It doesn't say it, at one point, it was going to limit it to nothing over 200, that you'd only pay that, over 200 tickets. Now it says capacity, so does that mean if you have a, you have a venue that's got a capacity of 200 and you sell 100 tickets, you'd still pay for that capacity? So it's very, it's very, I find it very confusing. It also seems, since I, I met with, I had spoken about this, that there have been other changes, such as that now that the tax is only if the venue collects the money for the tickets. So that does seem really directed laser focus on Indian Hills, because it seems to me the wording has it, if we are a small nonprofit and we have an event at Groton School, and Groton School doesn't collect the money for the tickets, then nobody pays a ticket tax. So, the, I'll read you the wording. It says, "The tax shall apply to every admission at such venue for any performance or event in which the fee is charged, charged to a person and collected by a vendor." And your definition of vendor is the facility or the venue. So I, I find much of this confusing, and I don't, I agree that it's not ready for prime time. And when I spoke to someone about it, who was on the Select Board, I was informed that there's a real possibility that once it, if it even is passed at, at the Ways and Means, that there would be changes to it. Well, if there's going to be changes to it, why are we voting on it now? It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Haddad, do you want to address some of those questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the way the article is drafted is that any venue that can hold more than 200 people would be taxed on the people going there. So if 100 people show up, 100 people would be, would pay the ticket tax. It's also important to point out that the article does not specifically state Indian Hill. It was drafted by Select Board Member Deegan and myself to bring forward to the town meeting, and the reason we drafted it was to get the issue before the Legislature. That's all this article is doing tonight. It's allowing the Legislature to take action on this. They may choose to reject it, they may choose to amend it, but all we're asking you to do tonight is bring this matter before the Legislature for consideration. Thank you.
I was a vote against this at the Select Board, and I want to explain my thinking here. Indian Hill will, I believe the genesis of this article was originally aimed at Indian Hill. I don't, Josh Deegan isn't here to explain that, but that's my, certainly my strong impression. Indian Hill will be similar to the two large private schools in being a nonprofit organization with a large paid staff, a large physical plant that collects a lot of revenue and doesn't pay any taxes. So like Lawrence Academy and Groton School, Indian Hill will have a major impact on the town in some very, very good ways. They will add prestige and boost the town's fame and stature and provide premier enrichment opportunities to our town and citizens beyond our town. They will also, undoubtedly, have an impact on town services by adding increased traffic on our roads and requiring police and fire and EMT involvement in emergency situations, for example, for accidents or incidents among their patrons, students, or staff. So I do think it is fair to explore ways for Indian Hill Music to provide some funding to the town, but I do not agree that a ticket tax is the way to do that at this time. With Lawrence Academy and Groton School, we already have a mechanism in that both institutions make a voluntary pilot payment to the town. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes, and both schools make very generous pilot payments to the town that we know we are going to get and we can count on those. We have not had the conversation with Indian Hill Music that I think we should have to explore this idea with them. I think we should reach out to explore the idea with Indian Hill instead of pursuing a ticket tax, and I do think it would help address some of the lingering feelings about the way the building permit was handled if Indian Hill would join us in that conversation. So I urge you to defeat this article.
In the back, yes, sir. Mr. Lyman.
Thank you, Brooks Lyman, Townsend Road. I initially supported this article, but after listening to Sheila Harrington, I think I've changed my mind. Not that it isn't a good idea in some respects, but I think it's a waste of energy. I don't think the Legislature is going to go along with us. The idea of the pilot that Becky mentioned, I'm on the Housing Authority Board, and we pay the town a pilot, not a very big one, because we're not very big compared to the two schools she mentioned, but nonetheless, we pay some of our share to the town, and I think that's the way that we should be going with Indian Hill or with any other nonprofit, and so I would urge not to pass this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening. It seems to me that, following this the last couple of years with this major development coming to town, that we have a broken relationship with a major entity that's going to reform, transform this town into a wonderful destination community for the arts. So a lot's been said, I agree with. There are ways to approach this, this neighbor who's coming to town. There are ways to approach this, this neighbor who's coming to town in a different fashion. And I would urge the Select Board to consider a rethink on what appears to be a broken relationship and start fresh. This is an opportunity to vote this down tonight, to send a message to Indian Hill, who has been targeted, that we want a fresh approach and a new relationship. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. In the back.
Yes, good evening. My name is Lisa Fiorentino, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Indian Hill Music. I'm also a Groton resident. I want to start by saying that Indian Hill is thrilled to be coming to Groton. We were founded here 34 years ago, and we are very glad that we are coming back here, and we do want to have a very positive relationship with the town of Groton. I want to just make a couple points that were said here tonight. First, regarding police details, I think there is a misconception, because Indian Hill pays for all of its own police details related to our operations. The town of Groton will not have to pay for any of that. We didn't ask for that, and as part of our planning board site plan, we agreed that we were going to pay for all of those. As far as pilot payments, our project is about three and a half years away from being completed, and once it's completed and we've moved in and we've gotten our operations in full swing, we're happy to have conversations about pilot payments. However, at this time, it's really premature to engage in that kind of a conversation when we're so far away from actually being here. Regarding the ticket tax specifically, we oppose this tax because it taxes nonprofits, the missions of nonprofits, the fundraising events of nonprofits, and we believe that that sets a very dangerous precedent and could have negative ramifications for nonprofits throughout the state. So, I just wanted to give our points of view. Again, we're very happy to be coming here, and we can't wait to be part of this community. Thank you.
In the back, yes. Mrs. Jennings.
Hi, Mary Jennings, Blossom Lane. As a representative of a nonprofit and also a representative of a nonprofit that is running a venue with over 200-seat capacity, the Prescott School, I'd like to speak against this article. First of all, as a citizen of Groton, I don't want to send something to the legislature that we haven't thought out well. That doesn't speak well for our town. We haven't talked about how we're going to monitor the application of this tax, who collects this tax, which entity within our town hall is going to make sure it happens, and how all of this is collected, let alone a little nonprofit like Friends of Prescott or maybe another small nonprofit that wants to use a 200-seat venue like Prescott or Groton Dunstable Auditorium. They are now going to have to keep several sets of books, books for the taxes to Groton and books for their small profits for a nonprofit. I would say that we should not tax nonprofits. We want to become an arts and cultural center. We want professional musicians, professional artists to come here, not just Indian Hill, but to venues like this, to venues like Prescott, to venues that maybe haven't been built yet. Why would we discourage them with such a tax? Thank you.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Allen would like to speak.
With the wireless microphone, Ms. Allen.
I move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to move the question. A motion to move the question suppresses all debate. If you vote in favor of moving the question, we move directly to voting on the main motion under Article 10. If you vote against moving the question, debate will continue. A motion to move the question requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion to move the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by a unanimous vote. We move directly to the main motion under Article 10. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
No.
The noes have it. Article 10 is defeated. We now move to Article 11, Mr. Esam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and allocate the following sums from the Community Preservation Fund to the following sub-accounts. CPC operating expenses, $5,000. Open space reserve, $73,800. Historic resource reserve, $73,800. Community housing reserve, $73,800. And unallocated reserve, $511,600.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Esam.
Article 11, an annual exercise to place the next fiscal year's anticipated Community Preservation Act revenues into the CPA bins, which are the community housing bin, historic preservation bin, open space and recreation bin, and the unallocated reserve bin. It is out of these funding bins that Town Meeting will approve projects to be funded. Except for the $5,000 for the Community Preservation Committee's administrative expenses, all fund expenditures will require an additional vote by Town Meeting. Those requests will come in Article 12 and for the Surrenden Farm Debt Service in Article 33, which is part of the consent agenda. I have two slides for you tonight. Financial shot of the Community Preservation's financial situation. First slide shows the anticipated available funding for FY 2020 projects, which you'll be voting on tonight in Article 12. The first line indicates our projected balance in these funds at the close of fiscal year 2019, which is June 30. We have about $569,000 in the community housing reserve. We have $105,000, $106,000 in historic reserve. We have about, oops, am I looking at the wrong one? Excuse me. I looked at the wrong one. Year-end FY 2019, $495,000 in the community housing reserve. Historic reserve is about $32,000. Open space and recreation bin has about $30,000, and then the unallocated reserve bin has $267,000 in round numbers. We forecast how much of the funds will be put into these accounts based upon the local surcharge. You'll notice that there's a 3% surcharge on your real estate tax bill. We're forecasting that to be $670,000 in FY 2020 and allocated 10% in each of the housing, historic, and open space/recreation bins and the balance in the unallocated reserve. We're forecasting a state match of 10% of that amount, $67,000. I just want to say that that is a very conservative estimate. Last year, we also forecasted a state match of $67,000, but the match actually came in at $197,460. So, there's a 3X on the conservative nature of that state match. And then we also have a little bit of interest. And so, you can see on the subtotal line what the balance would be after those additions. Then we're going to make two adjustments to that. If you approve this article, there'll be a $5,000 deduction from the unallocated reserve, which will go to pay the operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. And then we also have, as I said, Article 33, the Surrenden Farm Debt Service will take, we're proposing to take $100,000 out of the open space and recreation bin and the balance of that out of the unallocated reserve. And that gives you on the bottom line of this slide, the funds that are available for these Article 12 projects that you'll be hearing about. Next slide. If you should decide to approve all of the Article 12 motions, the bottom line here will show what the balance in those funds will be at the end of fiscal year 2020. We'll have about $520,000 in the community housing reserve, $55,000 in historic. Basically, we will have emptied the open space and recreation bin and the unallocated reserve bin. I also want to say that CPA expenditures are completely discretionary, except for the payment of the Surrenden Farm Debt Service. Approving expenditures will not raise your taxes. Choosing not to fund projects will not lower them. There is, however, an opportunity cost associated with funding current proposed projects. If some unforeseen, wonderful, expensive, and eligible CPA project comes forward in future years, then those funds will simply not be available. So, that's the opportunity cost. So, I could answer any questions if you have them.
Floor is open for debate on Article 11. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, sir. In the back.
Me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Schulman.
Okay. Thank you. Stuart Schulman, Chicago P. Rowe. I just had a question. I thought we used to call that affordable housing. Now it's community housing. Did we rename that? And which is, maybe it doesn't mean anything, but I just was wondering about it.
In Chapter 44B of Mass. General Laws, it is called the Community Housing Fund and has been since its inception. I think the affordable housing is a, is an informal term that's used, but the formal is community housing. And it's, in terms of definition, it's a little bit different in the sense that community housing allows people who are not only low income but also moderate income to be eligible to live in housing that's funded by the Community Preservation Act.
Other questions and comments under Article 11. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 11 passes by a majority vote. Article 12 will have five motions. We will start with Motion 1, Affordable Housing Coordinator, Mr. Daniel Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $48,882 from the Community Preservation Fund/Community Housing Reserve to fund Community Preservation Application 20-12 Affordable Housing Coordinator. Thank you.
Article 12, Motion 1, has been moved and seconded. The floor is open for debate. Mr. Haddad is available to answer any questions. Seeing none, Motion 1 requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion 1 passes by a majority vote. Motion 2, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $5,627 from the Community Preservation Fund/Historic Reserve to fund Community Preservation Application 2020-02 Historic Volumes Storage Cabinet.
Motion 2 has been moved and seconded with a presentation of the town clerk, Mr. Bouchard, who then has to take minutes on his own presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, this is a request to alleviate the problem of overcrowding in the town clerk's vault. We have, it's jam-packed. If you've ever been in there, we're stacking things on top of each other. And one of the reasons for that is over about an eight-year period, the CPC and the town preserved, beautifully preserved, about 100 historic volumes of old records, Town Meeting records and other things, births, deaths, a lot of the historic records. And you should stop by and see them sometime. They came out really well. They take up about half the space in the vault. They are not used all that often. This, the idea here is to preserve, is to purchase a fire-rated, lockable storage cabinet, which would be in the front office of the clerk's office, the main room there, and would store these historic records. So, what this would help with is freeing up space in the main vault for records that we continuously put in over time. And it'd also make a little more visible, these records that were preserved by the town to the public, which are used for genealogy and some legal purposes, but also be more visible so people will get a better appreciation for them. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments under Motion 2? Motion 2 requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion 2 passes by a unanimous vote. Motion 3, Mr. Esam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $3,763 from the Community Preservation Fund/Open Space Reserve and to appropriate the sum of $96,237 from the Community Preservation Fund/Unallocated Reserve for a total of $100,000 to fund Community Preservation Application 2020-03 Conservation Fund.
Motion 3 has been moved and seconded with a presentation for the Conservation Commission and its chairman, Mr. Peter Morrison.
Between the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, the Conservation Fund should be maintained between $750,000 to $1 million. As of March 31st, we're down to about $365,000, but we have protected some land this year. Between '18 and '19, we've protected about 62 and 1/4 acres across seven parcels in town. This includes both the purchase of land for fee and also donations to the commission or to the town. When somebody donates land to the town, the Conservation Commission will also pay for the closing costs, the title search, and all of those things. So, even donations end up costing us money. So, this is another deposit into our fund so that we can go ahead and continue to preserve land for Groton and continue to make Groton a community that we're all proud of. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments under Motion 3? It requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion 3 passes by a unanimous vote. Motion 4, Mr. Shook. I'm sorry, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $300,561.
Hang on. You got the wrong motion, I think. Is this $45,000?
No, sorry. 104, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So, ladies and gentlemen, he started with the wrong motion. So, we will do Motion 4. Who do I have? Mr. Shook?
I'm here.
Okay, he is here. All right.
Okay.
We'll deal with you guys later. Go ahead, Mr. Shook.
I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $45,000 from the Community Preservation Fund/Historic Resource Reserve to fund Community Preservation Application 2020-10 Fitch's Bridge Wall Repair. Thank you.
Motion 4 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Delaney, do you wish to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. About half a dozen years ago or so, we rebuilt Fitch's Bridge, put a nice walking path over the top. But we rebuilt the main foundations that carried the bridge. The training walls on both sides were not addressed. The wall on the, I'd say the south side, which is on the 119 side, failed. We had to do a repair to that last year. The wall on the other side, on the Pepper Road side, is in the same condition, and it's something we need to do immediately. This is money that's going to be used for purchase of materials, potential rental of equipment. Work's going to be done by the DPW staff to repair this wall.
Are there questions or comments under Motion 4? Are there questions or comments under Motion 4? Floor is open for debate. Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion 4 passes by a unanimous vote. Now we go to Motion 5, which is CPA funding for the library roof preservation. Mr. DeGroot to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to appropriate the sum of $300,561 from the Community Preservation Fund Unallocated Reserve to fund Community Preservation Application 2020-06 1893 Library Roof Preservation.
Motion 5 has been moved and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the point in which we have asked the representatives of the library to present both on Motion 5 and then also to discuss Article 8, which also involves funding for the library roof. So for the library, we have the chairman of the trustees, Mr. Zeiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You've seen us before, and we're back again. If you remember, in the fall of 2017, we addressed the issue of leaks in our roof. We asked for $5,000 of CPC funding, which allowed us to survey the roof. Our architectural firm noticed that there were some problems with the roof. So then we came back in the spring of 2018, and we asked for $66,000 to go ahead and engineer a fix to this roof. Next slide, please. As you can see from this, oh, wait a minute, I forgot to tell you. We hand, I know people can't always see, so we printed up a little handout if you wanted to take a quick, closer look. So slide number two here. As you can see, this is in our main stairway. We had a huge ice dam. This is where the 1999 addition meets the 1893 building. The valley doesn't work there correctly. We've spent over $100,000 over the course of five, 10 years trying to repair these issues, and that's why we have moved to a holistic approach to do this. We are asking for two separate articles, your approval of two separate articles, this CPC funding to renovate, repair the 1893 roof, and then I will read the second article, which is for the rest of the roof. Next slide, please. As you can see, the brown box is the original 1893 slate steep slope. That is slate. Inside the orange box there is the rubber low-slope roof. You can't really see it unless you're on a drone, but that's where all of our mechanics, all of our heating, cooling, et cetera, et cetera, is in there. That roof had, when we put it in, because it's a flat roof, we knew it had a 20-year lifespan, and it's now 20 years, so we need to replace that. The synthetic slate roof, in the blue, is the back 1990, the exterior portion of the roof. Next slide. The 1999 synthetic slate shingles have deteriorated. We had a 50-year warranty on them. The manufacturer has gone out of business, and if you go to the next slide, you can see, well, hopefully you can see, they're deteriorating, they're discolored, there's vegetative growth on them, the snow guards that were put in were substandard. We did not have a clerk of the works on this project. Our drain system was supposed to be a six-inch gutter system. The contractor, who also went out of business, put up three-inch gutters instead of six-inch gutters. So basically, our roof system is in dire need of repair. Next slide, please. So this is titled Request Number 1. You haven't heard this request. This is the next request. So could you go on to the next? This is the article that we're talking about right now. If you approve the CPC funding of $300,561, we will apply that money to the 1893 roof repair, renovation, and protection of the historic, excuse me, the historic building. If you go back a slide, I will read this request afterwards, but this is the oversight of the entire project, right? So this covers contractor services. It also calls for the clerk of the works, owner, project manager, and it replaces all of the failing roof systems. It's a total repair of the system. The 1893 slate roof and the historic skylight will be replaced. Slate is a long-lasting product. This is an 1893 roof. 126 years later, we're going to replace it. We're replacing a 20-year synthetic roof right now as well. We're going to replace the 1893 skylight as well. We will be replacing the 1999 skylights as well. We will, this, all of the monies that we're asking for tonight will be a total roof repair, so all the underlaments, the flashing, the snow rails, the gutters, the downspouts, and any sort of structural repairs, such as the joints between the two buildings that need to be addressed. Next slide. So we, our architectural firm, GRLA, came up with the architectural plans to repair the roof. They helped us, or they actually put it out to bid, and we had 15 people who were interested in coming out to look at the project, but because we're on such a tight, narrow property line, and it is four stories in the back and the front, et cetera, it's a very complex roof, we received three bids. Unfortunately, all three bids were higher than the estimated amount that we were hoping for. The lowest bid was $1,346,000. In our bid, we had put some alternatives, alternates into the bid. We were going to address repairing the front windows, repainting them, recaulking them. We've taken that out. We were going to re-point the front of the building as well, because the architectural firm had said that we should do that in the next five to 10 years. We've taken that out of our bid. There was some flashing work and some sealing of the 1999 windows. We've taken that out of our bid. So we've removed $240,000, $259 from our bid. Next slide, please. And this is, this is the exciting stuff, right here. So the top line, there's your lowest bid, $1,346,000. We removed $240,000 and change. We are proposing that we spend $1,105,741. We're putting a 15% contingency on this project, which is higher than most construction projects, but this is, again, an 1893 roof that we're dealing with. Roofs are notoriously more prone to water damage, so hopefully we're not going to need the 15% contingency plan, but we've put in 15%. We're putting in $70,000 of a clerk for the works, project manager. We're putting in architectural oversight for $90,000. So the total comes to $1,431,602. This is not good news. This is much higher than we had hoped, but as I said, 15 people came out to look at it, we got three bids. If you approve the Community Preservation Committee grant, this Article 12D, that would provide $300,561 to this project, and then the next article is going to ask for the remainder of the money, which is $1,131,41. $41, yeah. If passed, if both of these measures pass tonight, then, of course, we have to go to the ballot to approve the total expenditure. So that is our roof project. If there are any questions, we'd be glad to field them.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any other committee reports on this article. Are there any questions or comments from the floor on Motion 5? Motion 5 is for CPA funding in the amount of $300,561. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Hi, Leslie Lathrop, Sunset Road. Just wondering, will this work be, will the library remain open when this work is being done?
That, thank you for your patience with the carpeting issue going on. Yes, the idea is that it would be open. As you know, roofers like to come early in the morning, so they'll be there for at least three hours before we're open at 10:00. But we also, part of the bid process, we specifically said that the building needed to be occupied. They needed to put up protective barriers so people can get in and out of the building.
So you don't need alternative space? That's great.
Yes, no, we don't, we don't have to move.
Mr. Hadad, are you looking to speak? Okay. Are there any other questions under Motion 5? Yes, sir, in the back.
Yes, hi, Miran Kiyosin. Obviously, the work needs to be done. Back to the clerk of the works figure for a moment. That seems awfully low insofar as they not trying to spend more money, but how'd you come up with that number?
Mr. Hadad has talked to the clerk of the work, who oversaw the fire department building.
And the senior center?
Successfully brought that in on time and under budget. He's also now working on the
The center?
On the senior center. So we have a proven person who has agreed to that price.
Okay, good. Thank you.
In the back, yes, ma'am. Yes, to my left. Hi, yes.
Good evening, Donna Neack, Pepper Road, West Groton. I'm always afraid of the lowest bid. What assurances do you have that this is quality work? We're not going to fall into the same problem that we had before?
Right.
Mr. Zeiler.
So that's why we've hired a clerk of the works to oversee that the installation is correct, and part of the bid process was our architectural firm actually called references. This is a well-known, well-established, I believe it's a 30, 40-year-old firm that is known in the community. They're primarily a roofing company, and that's why their bid was so much lower. They weren't hiring a subcontractor to do the roofing. They do their work in-house, so that's why it came. The other bids were 1.7, this bid was 1.3, whatever it was. So it's still an expensive bid, but I appreciate your concern.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Yes, I think it would be interesting to know more specifically, what does a clerk of the works role involve?
Because I know that's a huge critical component to this, to make sure that it goes correctly, and I think it would be helpful to me, and I think others who may not understand what a clerk of the works does. Thank you.
Mr. Hadad.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The clerk of the works is a very important job for the town. It's the eyes and ears of the town, who's on the site daily with the contractor, makes sure that the contractor has the right amount of people on the site when they bill us, reviews all the invoices, actually reviews the work, coordinates inspections with our building commissioner to make sure that those are done properly. It is probably the most important position in the construction job on behalf of the town because he ensures that the project is done right. On our senior center project, the clerk of the works has been very important overseeing that project, finding issues that needed to be corrected right away, and I couldn't urge the meeting more than to support funding for clerk of the works. We need to have that on-site. Thank you.
Further comments or questions under Motion 5? Yes, sir, in the back.
Sartini Mill Street. Could you elaborate a little bit on the bonding for this job?
So that is the next motion. Mark Hadad will talk about the bonding.
We'll do that under Article 8.
So this is just releasing the CPC fund so that we can move on to the next article?
Yes, sir, in the back. I move the question. Motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to move the question. A motion to move the question suppresses all debate. If you vote in favor of moving the question, we'll move directly to the vote on Motion 5. If you vote against moving the question, debate will continue. Requires a 2/3 majority. All those in favor of the motion to move the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by a unanimous vote. Now to the main motion under Motion 5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion 5 passes by a unanimous vote. We now move to Article 8, Mr. Zeiler.
This should be fun. Article 8, the library roof. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,131,041 to be expended by the Groton Board of Library Trustees in fiscal year 2019 and thereafter for the purposes of reconstructing, repairing, and replacing the roof of the Groton Public Library and all other costs associated and related thereto, including construction administration on the Groton Public Library located at 99 Main Street, Groton, Mass., and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow the sum of $1,131,041 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to authorize the Groton Board of Library Trustees to contract for and in the name of the town for such purpose, and to do all things necessary for the accomplishment of the foregoing purpose, including the expenditure of all appropriated funds and any funds received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or other sources for such construction, and, further, that in any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs, payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, provided, however, that no funds may be expended hereunder for this purpose unless and until the town approves a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection k, and Section 21(c), subsection m.
Article 8 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Zeiler.
This pays for the roof.
Mr. Hadad.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as the library trustee stated, the town will be asking to bond $1,131,041 under this article. We would bond it over 20 years, and based on our anticipated interest rate, we anticipate the average annual debt service over the life of 20 years at level debt service to be $82,000. The anticipated increase to the tax rate for $82,000 a year is 5 cents. The annual cost to the average taxpayer, that's a home valued at $459,000, would be $22.95, and then the cost to the average taxpayer over 20 years would be $459. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the main motion under Article 8 is on the floor. It is open for debate and comments. You may continue to ask questions about the library project if you so choose. Yes, sir.
I was interested in the bonding for the protection of the roof once it's put in place. This bond takes care of the financing, but I was interested in the bond where the contractor would protect us if that roof fails.
Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, sir.
When we put out, when we put out a contract and a bid on a project, the contractor is required to put up a performance bond on his work to ensure that we get exactly what we pay for. So there will be a performance bond in place, and then there is also a warranty that the manufacturer has to come in and certify, and on a slate roof, I'm not exactly sure what the length of the warranty is, but that warranty will cover any repairs to that roof as long as the manufacturer certifies the installation of the roof. But there is a performance bond on the project that the town, we've done that in the past with the fire station, we had to go after the performance bond when the contractor failed to deliver what he was supposed to deliver to the town, and we successfully drew money back on that bond that allowed us to finish the project. So we would have a performance bond on this project as well.
Are there questions or comments? Are there questions or comments? On Article eight, because it authorizes borrowing, this requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the main motion under Article eight signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? The ayes have it, Article eight passes by a two-thirds majority.
Thank you.
Article nine, Mr. Flynn? Oh, I'm sorry, Article 13, Mrs. Minugian. Thank you, Mr. Hadad.
So I am taking over for Mr. Flynn, who had other things he had to tend to this evening. We do have with us tonight interim principal Jeremy Slotnick to answer any questions that come up on this article. So, I move that the town hereby approves the $3,704,616 borrowing authorized by the Neshoba Valley Technical High School District for the purpose of paying costs of the replacement of roofs, windows, and doors at Neshoba Valley Technical High School, 100 Littleton Road, Westford, Mass., 01886, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the roof of the school, excuse me, and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further, that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 55% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded, Mrs. Minugian.
So I'm sure that was clear to everyone. The tech high school of which we are a member is looking for replacement of roofs, windows, and doors. The MSBA will be reimbursing them for 55% of the expenses that they deemed reimbursable. The amount left will be bonded and then apportioned to member towns by enrollment. Currently, as of 2018, Groton was about 6.34% of the students.
Are there questions under Article 13? Mrs. Minugian.
The town manager is clarifying that he anticipates a $37,000 impact to the town from this debt annually.
Floor is now open under Article 13, are there questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Do all, do all the districts have to, all of the towns have to approve this for it to pass?
No, it has to be approved by a majority of the towns.
Are there other questions or comments? Article 13 requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? Article 13 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 14, Mrs. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $77,000 from the excess and deficiency fund, otherwise known as free cash, to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of providing funding to maintain and operate Prescott School in future fiscal years. Said funds to be used to supplement any rental income received from tenants of the building.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded, Mrs. Pine.
So there's an explanation of this article in the warrant, which I think is pretty clear. Basically, the town, as the owner of the building, has some ongoing costs for maintenance of the Prescott School building, even though the building is currently being leased to the Friends of Prescott. The bulk of this money, the $77,000, is for snow plowing, for mowing the grounds, and for insurance. The insurance company also came, did an inspection and required us to upgrade the electrical panel for the building, which was an unanticipated cost. The rest of the money is for inspections and safety-related repairs, such as for the exterior side stairs where some of the concrete was deteriorating. This money will cover the three-year period of the lease that the town signed with the Friends of Prescott. And the reason it's in this separate article is because it covers three years, so it cannot go into the operating budget, which can only cover one year. And the reason that we need to fund it for three years is to guarantee that the town will meet its obligations under the lease and to allow the Friends to then negotiate three-year subleases with paying tenants as described in their business plan, which the town has accepted. It should be noted that the Friends of Prescott have offered to pay for a number of the interior repairs and improvements that have shown up as needing to be done recently. And they are also required to pay $20,000 to the town in the third year of their lease. And at this point, I believe the Friends of Prescott are going to give you some more information.
Yes, for the Friends of Prescott, Mr. Esam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Bruce Esam, I'm the treasurer of Friends of Prescott, a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation. Earlier, we talked about Indian Hill. They're sort of on the large end of a 501(c)(3). We're sort of on the other end. We're very small. We're just getting started. We're trying to get ourselves off the ground. We did sign a lease, a three-year lease with the town of Groton, to essentially prove to the town and to ourselves that we can operate the building, provide classes for adults in the building, and rental spaces for commercial rentals. We have four tenants right now. We're offering classes. And one of the things we want to do right now is to look for additional tenants. And one of the things that tenants look for is stability. They need to know that we, Friends of Prescott, are going to be there for the duration of their lease. And they need to know that the town is willing to put the funds into the building to do the plowing, pay for their insurance. Friends of Prescott has its own insurance. We have a $2 million commercial general liability insurance policy, as well as directors and officers' insurance. Those expenses are paid solely by Friends of Prescott. We also pay all the utilities for the building, electricity, heat, internet, telephone, and provide those to our tenants. So Friends of Prescott would ask that you help us, if you can, by making sure that the town provides those services that have been agreed to in the lease agreement, so that we can offer some assurity to future rental customers in the building and therefore allow us to make a financial go of this. Thank you.
Did you also have a colleague with you, Ms. Bussler?
No, she was not able to make it tonight.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay, thank you, sir. The chair will now open the floor to questions or comments on Article 14. In the front, yes ma'am.
My name is Joanne Shorn, I live on Pawcocket Path. I just want you all to listen to what I have to say about Friends of Prescott and need, or not need for Prescott School. In my hand
Do you stand closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry. In my hand, I have the Groton unstable community education folder that I get every year. I also have the Groton library, public library. We also have the new center. And we continue to provide programs even when the center is being built. And we also have the Toomey Center. All of which provide many, many programs. And in fact, more so than I believe the Prescott School can. We also, at the Toomey Center, you can host your children's birthday party there. At the current time, I don't believe that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you can have birthday parties at Prescott School even though they're offered without the parents being there with the children. And at the present time, I don't think the children of any age can be there without a parent due to some of the issues at the school. So there are many things here already in our community for us. And when I look at the 62,000 that the school has, Prescott has already received, and now they're asking for another 77, I'm looking down the road with an old building. And don't get me wrong, I'm all for historical buildings in this town and preserving them. But when I look at what's trying to be taken place at the Prescott School, once you start getting into fixing things and down the road, how much more are we going to need to fix things? So that's my concern. When you start peeling back the onion, any older home, once you start getting into the guts of a home, a historical building, and you're trying to fix something, you always end up finding something else that needs to be fixed. So for me, I'm going to vote no. My money, as far as I'm concerned, I look at needs and wants. I think this is a want, not necessarily a need for our town. I'd rather have my money go to the school system, public safety, DPW, our resource officers here in town. We have two resource officers covering seven schools. I have a neighbor whose grandson was at Sandy Hook. And don't think it can happen to us, because it's happened to a lot. So please, I urge you to get some of these pamphlets and see what's offered, at a much lower cost, by the way.
In the back, yes ma'am.
Barbara Betz, Dubner, West Groton. I totally agree with the last speaker. I think she's absolutely right. She said all the things that I think about. I resent paying taxes for the Prescott School. I resent it a lot. And I'm happy to, I'm very happy to pay for the library. I'm very happy to pay for the other things that we need to have. But I can't afford to keep on having to pay higher and higher taxes. And I think this is a frill, unnecessary, and it's a money pit.
In the back, yes sir.
I just want to make the point that it was mentioned that the Friends of Prescott is asking for this money. The Friends of Prescott is not asking for this money. The town is asking for this money in order to meet its obligation to a lease that it signed on the behalf of the town. It signed that lease because town meeting refused to sell the building. Part of the argument about not selling the building was to keep it. Friends of Prescott has stepped up and said, "We can help you keep it. We just need you to plow the driveway and take care of the other issues along the way" while they demonstrate their ability to generate enough funds to operate this building with little impact to the town. So let's be really clear about what is and is not being asked for and who is asking for it.
Mr. Robertson.
I should let you go first. I was on the lease committee along with Allison and Mark. And to go what Jack just said, this was a partnership between the town and the Prescott. It was, again, like was mentioned, was because we wanted to keep the building. It was voted to keep the building. I want to put a couple of points up here. One is that this is a contractual agreement for only three years. This has nothing to do with rebuilding the building in the future. If that happens to come up, it'll be voted. This is about supplying, plowing the roads around the school, cutting the grass, and minor capital. If there's major capital, hopefully it won't happen right now. But if the school decides they want to move forward because they're very successful, then we will do that if the town votes for it. If we don't, the town says, "No, I'm done, three years, we're done," it'll be over. And we'll do something else with that building. So the first thing is that that decision of what we want to do with that building, other than the current three-year lease, is not on the table right now. That's going to come up at some point in time, I'm sure. The other thing is, per the contract, the only thing, other than paying the bills for the power, heat, and light, that is required from Friends is the fact that they have to pay us $20,000 in year three. That's it. We, as part of the partnership, agreed that we would take care of, like I said, the outside of the building, some of the safety stuff that came up. And in three years, we'll see how well they're doing. We don't know yet, they're only six months into their three-year lease. They're a little bit behind, but you know, three years, three months, six months does not make a three-year lease. So we need to give them time to see if they're going to be successful. And whether there's other places in town that have other venues, that's probably irrelevant to this three-year lease, because a three-year lease says they have the building. That's what the town wanted when they kept the building, and that's what we're doing. And in the end, if they're successful and they get money raised, how the town wants to put money in the building, great. If in fact, they're not successful, then the decision will be to leave the building, and then we'll have another decision on our hand two, two and a half, three years from now. We also have checkpoints every year, twice a year, on how they're doing. And we have that first one coming up, I believe, in June, and another one in August. So we'll monitor how well they're doing to keeping the building up as far as traffic in the building for their rent. But again, the only, only thing they're responsible for besides taking care of the electricity, et cetera, is in fact paying us $20,000 in year three. And they've made the commitment that they would. So we, as a town, have to follow our commitment to the three-year lease. Thank you.
In the back, yes ma'am.
Anna Elliott, I just want to clarify a point made earlier. This town meeting, the majority did vote in favor of selling this building. It required a two-thirds vote, and it only lost by a couple of votes. So I just wanted to clarify that point, that this body did, the majority of this body did want to sell that building.
Ms. Minugian, down front.
So building upon what Anna just said additionally, what the folks who voted in favor of that town meeting night were, let me back up. We were looking at one specific offer to purchase the building, not an across-the-board, "Do we want to sell this building, yes or no?" Again, having worked with Bud and Friends of Prescott and the town manager, I have concerns that this building is costing more than we anticipated. These are not expenses that we would incur if the building were not leased. And I find myself in the difficult position of feeling that we simply can't afford at this juncture to continue funding this want of a building. And while it'll be a difficult decision at any point, I think that sooner than later is the time to recognize that we can't afford this.
In the back, yes ma'am. Ms. Jennings, yep.
Mary Jennings, president of Friends of Prescott. Friends of Prescott is working very hard to live up to its terms of the lease. We are investing over $55,000 a year in the maintenance and upkeep of the building. And that doesn't include the programming that has brought in over 555 registrations. We're very proud of that. And as an educator and a supporter of the library, a founder of the Peter Toomey Youth Center, and a senior citizen, I think that the registrations we have speak for themselves on what kind of need there is in our community for different kinds of education and at different times of the day. So our education program, though, is just a small part of it. Rentals to commercials and nonprofits is the meat of this. And we need a lease for three years so that commercials and nonprofits can come into that building and make this building come alive. A building sitting there vacant with insurance costs that are more than the insurance costs laid out here because it's a vacant building is not worth the money. A building that is empty while it waits to be sold, which has never been agreed upon here, whether it's by five votes or 500 votes, is a here, whether it's by five votes or 500 votes, is a building that is in danger. A building that is open to vandalism. A building that is dark in the center of our community. We are bringing life to this building. We are holding our end of this rental agreement, and we hope that the Town of Groton upholds it.
As a matter of fairness, the chair saw Mr. Lathrop next. He wishes to make a statement or a motion.
I move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question. Motion to move the question suppresses debates. We go directly to voting on the main motion. A vote against moving the question, debate will continue. A motion to move the question requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion to move the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. We now go directly to the main motion under Article 14, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Chair will hear it again. Perhaps this time he could raise the voter cards, so there is also a visual representation for the chair to see. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion passes by a majority vote unless there are seven voters who wish to challenge the ruling of the chair. If so, please raise your hand. Not seeing seven voters, Article 14 passes by a majority vote, and we move to Article 15. Ms. Menugian.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $60,000 from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to be expended by the Town Manager in fiscal year 2019 and thereafter to implement the recommendations of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, self-evaluation and transition plan for town buildings and all costs associated and related thereto pursuant to 28 CFR Section 35.150 Subsection D, prepared by the Northeast Independent Living Program dated January 2019.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Menugian.
So this is $60,000, obviously, to address a variety of individually rather minor items that prevent our public buildings from being fully accessible. These were identified in this report. And you can see there are actually two slides of individual cost items. I'm certainly not going to read you the whole thing. Thank you, Don. This is the second slide, and we're happy to answer questions if there are any.
The Town's ADA Coordinator, Michelle Collette, would like to say a few words.
The Commission on Accessibility sponsored and voted unanimously to support this article. The work was done, as Allison said, by the Northeast Independent Living Program, which is a not-for-profit organization that serves people with disabilities. And the buildings need to be brought up to current standards, and this is a reasonable request to do so on all of the town-owned buildings.
Chair will now open the floor to debates. Down front, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Menugian, I have a question. The expenses for the Groton Country Club, are they covered by Groton Country Club revenues?
Town Manager, Mr. Hadad.
Every year when we put together the operating budget for the, for the town and for the country club, we come up with revenues, anticipated revenues, to balance out that budget. And we put in what we call the so-called soft costs that come up throughout the year for building repairs and things like that. It is our hope that at the end of the year, when we balance out the books, the money for the repairs to the country club will be covered by the rental income, or the revenue income that we get from the, from the country club. But I'd be able to answer that question better in the fall, once we close the books on fiscal '20. Thank you.
Mr. Menugian, yes.
Will we ever get to see a budget of the country club, profit and loss?
Mr. Hadad.
I provide a profit and loss statement every year in the proposed operating budget. If you go onto the Town of Groton, or actually, it's now called grotonma.gov, I'm sorry. If you go onto the website and you look at the Town Manager's budget and the Town Manager's message, there is a profit and loss statement in there relative to the country club.
I'm sorry, did you say proposed or final?
The anticipated budget for FY '20.
That's not what I asked. What was the, do you ever do a year-end tally of costs and expenses?
Yes, I provide that every year to the Select Board in July.
With your point of order, please take the microphone, sir.
Please direct the speaker to address the moderator, opposed to getting into this back-and-forth conversation here. Thank you.
Thank you for the point of order. Mr. Menugian, if you could sum up your questions, and then we can get to an answer.
I apologize, Mr. Moderator. I'm finished.
Mr. Hadad, all set? There are other questions or comments under Article 15. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 15 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 16, Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from Excess and Deficiency Fund, also known as free cash, to be expended by the Town, expended by the Town Manager for the maintenance of James Brook as it impacts Broad Meadow Road and all costs associated and related thereto.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Geiger.
I'm sure many of you know where Broad Meadow Road is, but for those who may not, it runs from Main Street, across from where Route 40 enters Route 119, down through Wetlands, where the James Brook moves water down towards air in a general direction. And you've probably seen it closed more than a few times because the road was flooded. For the last several years, Broad Meadow Road has experienced a significant number of closings due to flooding on the road because of drainage issues with James Brook. In an effort to improve the situation and allow for better drainage, the DPW Director has recommended to the Select Board that routine maintenance and partial dredging of the channels of James Brook be completed. This work will allow for a better flow of James Brook and reduce flooding on Broad Meadow's road. It is anticipated that this work will cost approximately $50,000. Tom Delaney is here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John, if you ever take a look at an aerial photograph of that area, and I apologize, I probably should have had one ready here, you can see the old channels that are in the brook. About 15 years ago, this undertaking was taken once before. We went between Broad Meadow Road and the rail trail and alleviated a lot of the problems. This piece of the puzzle is going from the rail trail down to Old Air Road and potentially even maybe a little bit down Old Air Road, once we get that, once I get all the permitting in order. These are old farms, farm ditches that were there in the past. This is the same kind of operation that happened in Mayfield Farms off of, Mayfield Road, off of, off of Main Street. Dan McElroy's fields, those things were all wet and swampy. He went under on a different, a different avenue as the agricultural exemption to be able to do these ditches. We're going to go under, under a maintenance avenue to do the same things in these ditches and to dry this area out. I can actually remember when I was a kid, going through those fields, when they were fields, in the hedge roads and going over fences. These are the type of work that was done a long time ago in the past, whenever the permits weren't needed. Now the permits and stuff are needed, makes it a lot harder, a lot of different landowners. And this will, routine maintenance is what, has just been backed up for years, and that's what we're going in there for.
In the back, yes, sir.
Thank you, Peter Cunningham, 44 Smith Street. Just a real quick question for the Highway Director. I know, as you mentioned, this has been done before, and over time, it tends to get clogged up again, or there's bever activity, something that goes on. So how, will the ongoing maintenance is part of this, or is this just a one-time shot to get it flowing and then hope that it doesn't clog up again?
It's, it's going to have to happen again. I mean, it's probably going to have to happen every 15, 20 years. Broad Meadow Road is three feet below flood stage. Before we came forward with this article, I made a little presentation, slept and had an engineer look at it. Broad Meadow Road itself is three feet below flood stage. If you wanted to rebuild that road, you're going to have to build it three feet above flood stage, which is going to mean retaining walls, all kinds of core drillings to try to get down and find out where the mud is underneath of that road. Multi-millions of dollars. There's no, you're never going to get your cost for investment back for the amount of times it's going to be closed. This is the way the old farmers did in the past. This is the way it's worked. If you don't, if you have to do it every 15, 20 years to get the water to flow, I think it's, I think it's short money spent compared to the millions for a potential permanent fix.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Marsh Malanson, Raden Road. Has anybody looked at the environmental factors of this? Because, you know, often we do, you know, historically, we've done things in, in our country when we thought we were doing good, and in fact, we were making the situation worse.
So I'm going to begin the permitting process. The permitting process starts with the, with the money being allocated. If I have to do extra engineering, I think there's enough room in here to do a little extra engineering. We're not creating anything new. We're only going to be expanding, not expanding even, but just cleaning out existing channels that are there. We're not doing anything new except cleaning.
Down front, yes, sir.
David Smith, I live on Broad Meadow Road. I want to talk about the impact of not doing anything. The, the upper end where we live, the Main Street end, houses approximately 20 cars and trucks. When you add in the patrons of the library and the people who use the parking lot for the rail trail, you've got a very significant number of drivers who get into that one-way stretch and have to find a way out. Especially in the winter, when it floods and freezes over, you can't get out of Broad Meadow Road. You have, you have two choices. You can go to the left around the library, through Lawrence Academy land, against traffic signs, and make a difficult uphill entrance onto 119. Or you can go along the rail trail parking lot, which in the winter, although Tom and his crew work really hard, they can't keep up with the ruts and the potholes that inevitably follow, the freezing and, and the melting. You have two ways to ruin your car if you want to get out during, during those, those events. We've got to keep Broad Meadow open for both, both, traffic in both directions, but especially so that the one-way section, the library and the rail trail have decent exiting.
There are other questions or comments under Article 16. Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 16 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 17, Mrs. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move, excuse me, I move that the town vote to enact a new Chapter 168 of the Town of Groton General Bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code with an effective date of January 1st, 2020, as printed in the warrant.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Mrs. Pine.
Okay, so the Stretch Energy Code is a building code that requires new construction to meet certain energy-saving standards that are slightly more stringent than the regular building code requires. The Stretch Code only applies to new construction. Additions and renovations of existing homes are exempt and do not need to comply with the Stretch Code. So here's the reason that we are asking you to vote in favor of this, is because accepting the Stretch Code is the first step in applying for the Green Communities Program. Green Communities Program is a statewide program that provides a lot of money to help towns reduce their energy use. So there was a two-sided handout out there for you to pick up, available in the lobby. And you have that map to go up on the screen. You can probably see it the, on the map. Almost all of our neighboring towns are already in the Green Community Program. Dunstable is the only abutting town that is not a green community, but they're currently in the process of considering it. So it's green communities, but for some reason, they're in gold up there and they're not green. I think this is because these are the people who have adopted the Stretch Code, and they are therefore in the process. A lot of these towns have already become green communities, but perhaps not all of them. So once we become a green community, we will be eligible to receive a lot of money. I'm going to say that again, a lot of money in grants to pay for projects that would reduce our energy use. The handout gives some information about that, shows that Groton's initial grant, once we're accept, once we get into this program, is estimated to be $135,000. And that would be spent on things, projects that we already want to do, such as switching to LED lighting, adding insulation, replacing outdated boilers, caulking and sealing windows. I suspect that some of the work that the library trustees pulled out of their project that had to do with sealing windows can probably qualify for some of this funding if we get into the Green Communities Program. You should also pay attention on that handout, there's a list of what some of our neighboring towns have received. And you particularly look at the town of Westford, which in six years of being in this program has received more than one and a quarter million dollars. We could have that money ourselves if we got into that program. So I think this is a really exciting thing. The Green Communities Program is a win-win-win. As a town, we do the right thing for our planet by committing to a 20% reduction in our energy use, thereby reducing our production of greenhouse gases, reducing pollution, and moving toward cleaner renewable energy sources. We do the right thing for our budget by reducing our energy costs into the future. And we get rewarded for doing these things because the state provides the money to pay for these improvements. So it's no surprise that the Select Board unanimously supports this article, and we urge you to vote in favor of it.
Are there questions or comments on Article 17? Yes, sir, in the back. Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, Rodney Hirsch, Groton Electric Light Commissioner. First, a clarification on the handout. It stated that some of the funding to offsetting costs would come from Mass Save. That's only applicable if one new home is a national grid customer. Groton Electric does not participate in Mass Save, and hence, new house development that would rely solely on Groton Electric would not be eligible. There are very good reasons why Groton Electric does not participate in Mass Save, but that's a subject for another discussion. The second point is that at our last meeting, the Groton Light Commissioners, the, two of, were there, discussed this topic and recommended a no vote on this issue. The reason being the open statement under Section 168-4 of including any future additions, amendments, or modifications. And that, to us, was akin to signing a blank check. And I personally don't write blank checks, and I'd be surprised if many of you did also. But the real issue is that a lot of the low-hanging fruit has already been picked on energy conservation, has been incorporated into the town building code. And it would seem like a more And it would seem like a more prudent manner to address this would be to see what the additions are in the future that the, the green communities people might come out with and adopt them selectively as they make sense, both energy-wise and economically, before just blanket agreeing to everything in sight. At some point along the way, maybe they'll recommend or declare that existing homes and modifications also be included, so that any repairs or modifications also must fully comply with the existing things. You just don't know. Hence, the Lighten Commissioners, two of us, recommend a no vote on this one.
Mrs. Pine.
So I just wanna clarify, you cannot be a green community if you do not adopt the Stretch Code. And the Stretch Code is a building code. And I'm not quite sure if you and I are talking about the same thing, but the building code, this stretch building code that I hope we will adopt, only applies to the construction of new homes. And what it does is it requires a few more inspections and some more sophisticated energy testing to prove that the house is being constructed with energy-efficient methods. So, no one's existing house, no one is here, is gonna have to pay, do any of that for an addition or renovation of their house. It's only for new houses that are being built.
Are there questions or comments under Article 17? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Like to call that again with a show of hands, please. Get your card. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 17 passes by a majority vote. Article 18, Mr. Burke.
Now for the part of town meeting that everybody's been waiting for, the zoning articles. I move that Section 2184 of the Code of the Town of Groton zoning be amended as printed in the warrant.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Burke.
This is an article that owes its origin to a citizen petition that was submitted last Springtown meeting and was withdrawn by the applicant. And part of the withdrawal, the Planning Board indicated that they would submit an alternative article to address the concern that was raised by the petitioners. Specifically, this related to situations that occur more commonly in Lost Lake, where people who have smaller lots do not necessarily have the room on their, their home lot to park their vehicles. And what this article did was provide a mechanism where people who are in such a situation may park on another lot that's not adjacent to their lot by special permit to be granted by the Planning Board. The original article was much more liberal. It didn't limit itself just to parking. It was for all accessory uses. It had vague standards and requirements. So the Planning Board felt that if the town wished to allow the accessory parking of vehicles on non-contiguous property, this would be the way to do it. The Planning Board report voted six in favor and one not in favor to adopt this article.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Are there any questions or comments under Article 18? Because it is a zoning change, it requires a two-thirds majority. Not seeing anyone rise to speak. Chair will call the vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 18 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 18 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 19, Ms. Perkins.
I move that the town vote to amend the Code of the Town of Groton, Chapter 218 zoning as printed in the warrant.
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Mrs. Perkins.
The Planning Board held a public hearing on March 14th, 2019, relative to its proposed housekeeping zoning amendments. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of these housekeeping zoning amendments at the Springtown meeting. These are really corrections of typographical errors and changes of terms to make it more appropriate to the zoning. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments? Floor is now open for debate. As it is a zoning change, it requires a two-thirds majority. Seeing no one rise to speak, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 19 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Article 19 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 20, Mr. Morrison.
I move that the town manager, on behalf of the Conservation Commission and Water Commission, be authorized to enter into an agreement with an individual or individuals to conduct forestry activities on the properties managed by the Conservation Commission and the Water Commission for a term not to exceed ten years.
Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Morrison.
The reason we're doing this is basically to help with the administration. If we do this every year for every little piece of property, it adds a lot of administration costs. By doing a ten-year block, it's with the same forestry organization. We did go out and bid this and the same forestry organization that we've been using for the last nineteen, twenty years was the only response, response that we got. So again, this is to help with reducing the administration load for managing these properties for forestry.
Are there questions or comments under Article 20? Floor is now open for debate. Requires a majority vote. Seeing no one rise to speak. Chair will call the question. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 20 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Article 20 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 21, Ms. Menugian.
I move that the general bylaws of the town be hereby amended by creating a new Chapter 127 entitled Discharge of Water onto a Public Way as printed in the warrant.
Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Menugian.
So this is a fairly typical bylaw. Basically, it would prohibit homeowners, anyone in town, from discharging drainage, stormwater, basement flooding, anything from their property into the public way, which can be a safety hazard as well as a problem for the DPW.
Mr. Delaney, did you wanna speak to this? You don't have to, but if you want to.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Like Allison said, so this, it covers a couple different things. Sump pumps, as well as basically making a dam or some kind of alteration to, to, to property so water runs onto the public way. Summertime, it's not as big of an issue as it is in the wintertime. This winter, we had a lot of issues with sump pumps that were draining and pumping over sidewalks and it would end up being icy spots in intersections. And this is to, to help us to make sure we can keep things a little bit safer. You know, move the hoses behind the houses or come up with a different solution instead of just pumping it into the street.
Floor is now open on Article 21. Are there any comments or questions? Requires a majority vote. Seeing no one to rise. Rising to speak, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 21 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Article 21 passes by a unanimous vote. Mr. Pease, Article 22.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation increasing the number of liquor licenses available to the Town of Groton as follows. Three additional licenses for the sale of on-premises all-alcohol beverages. Two additional licenses for the sale of off-premises all-alcohol beverages. And to authorize the General Court to make clerical and editorial changes to form only to the bill, unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. And the Select Board shall be authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
Article 22 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Pease.
So we have run out of our ability for package stores to, you know, have, have more places that want to sell, sell alcohol and we have requests for that. So this is to allow the courts to give us more licenses. It's a request that any town can make and often are granted, but it's all up to the general legislature to let us know if we can do that or not. But we have to want it. So, we feel it's, it's a good idea. The Select Board's behind this, so we hope that you will also support this.
Floor is now open for debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 22? Article 22 requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Article 22 passes by a majority vote. The ayes have it. Article 23, the Stormwater Inspector, Michelle Collette.
I move that Chapter 198, Stormwater Management, Low-Impact Development of the Code of the Town of Groton, Section 198-14 Extension, be hereby amended by striking out the words "two years" and inserting in their place the words "three years." At the present time-
Article 23 has been moved and seconded. Now, Ms. Collette, we need to put the motion on the floor and approve it for debate. So now it's open for debate. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Stormwater Management bylaw presently requires that projects be completed within two years. It is more realistic to have the time period be three years, which is consistent with Conservation Commission orders of, orders of conditions that are typically granted for the same projects.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments under Article 23? The floor is now open for debate. Requires a majority vote. Seeing no one rise, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 23 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Article 23 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 24, Mr. Pease.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that this article be indefinitely postponed.
Motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Article 24, Mr. Pease.
This was put here as a placeholder in case we needed to rejigger the push-forward of the charter with the legislature, but it's moving forward very well. So we, the Select Board feels this is not necessary at this time.
The motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debates. It may still be debated, the motion to indefinitely postpone. Just as a point of, so you understand the procedure. When we do vote on this, if you vote for indefinite postponement, we'll move to Article 25. If you were to vote against indefinite postponement, the chair would then accept a positive motion on the charter. So if that's clear, Mr. Menugian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask one of the members of the Select Board to give us a more specific statement as to the status of the charter. What, what has it gone through to date since it was approved two years ago in Springtown meeting?
Mr. Pease?
If the meeting will allow me a moment to find the email from council, I will read the status. Here it is. Bill S. 1192, 194th current, an act relative to the Town Charter of Groton, has been petitioned by Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Harrington and Mr. Zado by vote of the town for legislation relative to the Town Charter of Groton Municipalities and Local Government Bill. It is currently on 122, excuse me, let me view the whole thing. On 122, it's referred to the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. On 122, the House concurred on 4/1, that's April 1st. There was a joint hearing scheduled for April 9th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Gardner Auditorium. On 4/29, the Senate came out with a favorable reporting by committee and placed it on the orders of the day for the next session. That is the update that I have. Is there a further update? So it is pending the, the next session for orders of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Barry.
Are there any further questions or comments on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 24? Requires a majority vote. Again, if you vote for indefinite postponement, we'll move directly to Article 25. If you vote against it, we will then consider a positive motion under Article 24. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 24 signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes by a unanimous vote. Article 24 is indefinitely postponed. Article 25 is a citizen's petition placed on the warrant by the signature of ten voters. Mr. John Amaral, the lead petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I move that the geographic limits of the Town Center Overlay District, Section 218-30.2 of the Groton Zoning Bylaw, be amended to include within the district boundaries the property situated at 11 Lowell Road, which is shown on the Groton Assessor's Maps as Map 113, Block 11, and described in a deed recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 71584, Page 410.
Article 25 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Amaral.
This, this property is known as the Waters House. It's, it abuts the Groton Inn property, which we have, our ownership team had developed. We are seeking to put this into the Town Center Overlay District. I do have with me tonight Rob Ansel of Perkins and Ansel and Brent Mogul of Mogul Architects. Brent was involved in some of the facets and architecture of the inn and the Forge and Vine Restaurant. I would state or share with you that this is not looking for approvals for a specific project, but rather allowing this property to be put into the Town Center Overlay District. And one of the purposes of that district is to promote the social and economic vibrancy of the town center. And with that being said, I'd like to invite Rob up to speak further about the, the Center Overlay District.
Mr. Robert Ansel.
My name is Rob Ansel and I live in Groton at 7 Shenandoah Road. I've had the privilege of being the attorney for the Groton Inn and saw that project from its infancy. John Amaral has been the principal investor of the Groton Inn and the developer. It's been quite an exciting ride and it's very fun to see where that project has come. What we are doing with the Waters House is, Dawn, if you could turn to our next slide, is that the property is the Waters House, which is at the intersection of Lowell Road and Main Street. We are next to the Groton Inn on the left and the Groton Housing Authority. What we are looking to do, and I'm, I'm going to be brief, is we're looking to include the property in what is called the Town Center Overlay District. We are not changing the underlying zoning in that district. So that means that any project that we are going to get approved will have to go through various approvals with the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, the Historic District Commission, and all other boards. We've had a number of informal meetings with the various boards and we've had some certainly receptive as towards the project. I'm gonna be brief, but the Town Center Overlay District provides, and I quote, "The Town Center Overlay District is intended to promote a socially and economically vibrant town center by enabling development by special permit of a mixture of civic, residential, commercial uses consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and the design guidelines of the district." The purpose of the Town Center Overlay District is to promote a socially, economically vibrant center. Certainly that this property is going to be used in conjunction with the Groton Inn. That's what the purpose of our request for rezoning is. And we don't know where we're going with the project yet, but we do have some general ideas and I'm gonna have Brent Mogul come to speak on that. Brent was, as John said, was involved in the design of many facets of the Groton Inn.
Mr. Mogul, forgive the chair for not knowing. Are you a- Are you a voter?
No.
Okay. Sir, as a non-voter, the Chair must seek the consent of the meeting to allow a non-voter to address the meeting. Does the Chair hear any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Mogul. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, thanks for staying this long. I know the crowd has stemmed out a little bit, but we really appreciate those who stayed to hear about this article. My name is Brent Mogul. I own an architectural firm in nearby Harvard, Massachusetts, and we've had the privilege of working on several projects in Groton over the years, many, many years. The most recent ones you might know about are the Forge &amp; Vine Restaurant, the Forge Village Mixed Use Property where Rollstone Bank opened this past week, the Pediatrics West Medical Building on the Mayats previous property, and we're working with the Groton Community School for their expansion, which we hope will start construction in the fall. No doubt, many of you know Dan Barton, who was a longtime resident in this town and served for nearly 15 years as the Chair of your Historic Districts Commission. Dan is a principal in our firm, and he will be assigned as the lead designer of our design team for this project should this pass this evening. Dan and I and the whole team are committed to designing a mixed-use project here that will complement both adjacent properties and will honor the mission and purpose of both the master plan and the overlay district design guidelines, which a lot of thought has gone into by many in this room. The passage of this article would allow us to begin the design process. No design has been done to date, and it will use the overlying district's guidelines that will inform our design efforts. And then we will go for approvals from a number of town boards and commissions where there will be public hearings that you would be certainly invited to attend and participate in. In general, our design objective will be to create a place that complements the vibrancy of the existing downtown area of Groton and one that enriches Groton's strong sense of community. More specifically, if you could go with the next slide. More specifically, there are four key components we'd like to accomplish with this. First is to the, I guess I'd like to see the slide of the building of the Waters House. Is that back to? Thank you. First and foremost is to repair and renovate the Waters House. It was built in 1782 and remodeled in 1855, and it's an excellent example of Second Empire residential structures. And with the passage of this article and some modest construction on the site, additional construction, we will be able to maintain the Waters House. That's an excellent example of that period for decades to come. Secondly, we know that it's important to the town to continue pedestrian paths. No, there's one more, please. As you can see, this indicates the possibilities for extending pedestrian paths all through the Town Overlay District from potentially Gibbet Hill down to Lawrence Academy through the Waters Site property, linking the Groton Inn and then further down Main Street. One important about component of linking these is we feel it's appropriate and probably the right thing to do, really, to maintain a large green space in front of the entire property. The Groton Inn is set back from the Main Street by about 75 feet, and the main facade of the Waters House is set back from Lowell Road by about 90 feet, and we would be proposing no new construction within those setbacks. So, any new construction that would take place next to the Waters House would be further away from those two streets so that we can maintain a large green space that will have new landscaping sidewalks and amenities for the town. Thirdly, the Town Center needs additional parking. Could we go with the next slide, please? And this article, if passed, would allow us to reconfigure the two existing parking lots that border the Housing Authority property, and it would also allow us to link parking lots across property lines, which we couldn't do today, so that we can gain efficiency in the parking lots, gain some more spaces. And in particular, we would be able to link the parking spaces in such a manner that no new curb cuts would have to be put on the street. We'd still use the two existing curb cuts, and no parking would be in front of any of the buildings. The parking would be hidden behind the new structures. Finally, we envision that the Waters House, in terms of uses, would contain two or three small boutique retail shops, possibly some short-term guest suites within the Waters House, and then some one- and two-bedroom residences in the new construction, which would be a new multi-unit building adjacent to the Waters House. This new building would be designed to complement the other architecturally significant structures that are in a town and will in particular be respectful of the size and the architectural character of both the Groton Inn and the Waters House, quite possibly featuring mansard roofs to match the Waters House and possibly front porches to match the Groton Inn. So, in summary, please remember that this approval of this article is not for a particular project. It hasn't been designed yet, but if it does pass, it will give us the tools to ensure that the future design efforts will be informed by the goals and objectives of the Town Center Design Guidelines, which are very sound and we feel will be a great thing for the Town of Groton. So, I thank you for your attention, and now John will answer questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add just a couple of other things. My family and I moved here 20 years ago. We have come to love this community. Our intention is to stay here through retirement, and we've gone through several town meetings where the budget is an issue and increase in taxation to the residences. There is a small, small commercial component to this. There's also the rooms that if the Waters House becomes a part of the Inn, there's the rooms tax. And with one- and two-bedroom residences, and they could be apartments or condominiums, it probably would not be attracting families. We bought this property less than a year ago from Lawrence Academy. It is back onto the town's tax rolls, and certainly with any modest development that takes place on the site, we expect it would be a net positive generator of tax revenue for the community on a year-to-year basis. We feel also that with the Town Center Overlay District and with the Inn, with Indian Hill Music coming to town, with the wonderful things that will hopefully be happening to the Donnelands Building and some other improvements that you currently see in the center on some private properties, that we're going to continue that sort of renaissance and that some of the things that Brent discussed were the green spaces. We would hope to have benches out there that people can sit and just enjoy and relax. And very importantly is limiting those curb cuts to what exists today. And as part of the Planning Board, I think it's part of that Town Center Overlay District, is the connectivity of the properties that are in that district. There are several vehicles that exit the Forge &amp; Vine only to take a quick left turn back onto Route 40 off of Main Street. If and when this is approved, that many of those vehicles that are heading down Route 40 and away from the center of town, they would not have to come out onto Main Street. So, again, we're trying to be very sensitive to the issues that currently exist in the center, but most importantly, bring some of that vibrancy and some additional community to the center of town. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, is there a report of the Planning Board?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board at its meeting of April 25th voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article. I would comment that we did look at the proposal that was put before you this evening in a little more detail, but we felt that the Town Center Overlay District provides the town the best vehicle for seeing the type of development we want to see on this property. If we stay with the existing current zoning, which is single-family residential, it doesn't allow them to do what they want to do. And if we went to any of our on-the-books business districts, it doesn't provide the town the ability to, the flexibility for mixed use, as well as the provisions for special permit and site plan approval and also the design guidelines that the Town Center Overlay District affords us. So, we think this is a good step to seeing this property put into active use in the downtown.
Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Perhaps because of my lingering 11 years on the Planning Board, I deferred my position on whether to support or not support this article until this meeting. I really wanted to get a little better feel of what the developers have in mind, and I'm pleased with what I've heard, so I wish to announce that I do support Article 25. Thank you.
Floor is now open for debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 25? Yes, sir.
Paul Funchreedy, Meadow Road. Yeah, it's a very nice proposal, but I've heard at previous town meetings that sewage capacity is a real issue. Is that not an issue here with the additional housing that you plan?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Moderator. I believe we have somebody here from the Sewer Commission-
Yes, sir, Mr. Grubiner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Sewer Commission has sufficient capacity allocated to the Town Center Overlay District to meet the needs of this proposal.
All right. Other questions or comments on Article 25? Requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 25 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 27, or 26, my apologies, is a citizen's petition placed on the warrant by the signature of 10 voters. Mr. Andrew George, lead petitioner, to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Select Board and the Conservation Commission be authorized to enter into an agreement with the Reedy Meadow Estates Trust by Alicia Rutherford for the use of a portion of the Town of Groton Conservation Property shown on Assessor's Map 228, Parcel 59, for the purpose of a drainage easement. Said easement area being shown on a plan entitled, "Overview Plan in Groton, Mass., Reedy Meadow Estates," dated February 4, 2019, revised on February 18, 2019, and prepared for Reedy Meadow LLC, Tingsborough, Massachusetts, prepared by Land Engineering and Environmental Services, on file in the office of the Town Clerk. That the town, acting by and through the Select Board and/or the Conservation Commission, be authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, in mitigation thereof, the land and property shown on the plan, entitled, "Land Swap Plan, Red Pepper Lane, Groton, Massachusetts," dated April 23, 2019, prepared for Reedy Meadow LLC, prepared by Land Engineering and Environmental Services, and that the Select Board be hereby authorized to petition the General Court for such legislation necessary therefore.
Article 26 has been moved and seconded. Mr. George.
Thank you. We have a short PowerPoint presentation here to perhaps give you some more information and then respond to any questions.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Hi, Scott Hepburn. I live at 14 Olivia Way. Before we drive into the PowerPoint, just wanted to give a quick overview, so everybody's aware, just of some of the issues we've been having. Most of the residents at Olivia Way moved in within the past year, and as part of that, we have two major issues occurring right now. The first is the cul-de-sac. At one portion of the cul-de-sac, during substantial rain or snowstorms, it ends up flooding, sometimes to the magnitude of 18 to 24 inches of water, as well as a few of the residents have substantial basement flooding where they have to maintain at a minimum one pump to pump out to keep the basement dry, as well as right now our temporary solution that we have are two electrical pumps that are pumping the stormwater catch basins, the water out of those basins into the conservation land behind the cul-de-sac. So, basically what this easement is, is basically giving us the ability to create an overflow for those drains into a pond, onto the conservation land. So, about five months ago, if we go to the next slide here, this is what the initial flood-in happened on November 2018. And then we go to the next slide. This is a video. We'll spare you guys the video just in essence, but here, this is actually my wife out there that we have about, she went out there about 18 inches in depth, and most of the cars that live at those houses, we had to park at the other end of the cul-de-sac and walk to our houses as we could not drive the vehicles through that. And then go to the next slide. And this was here just recently on January 2019. This is actually the worst we had in terms of flood-in. You can see most, the entire cul-de-sac is submerged. And the next slide. Just another angle of the flood-in. And then this is one of the basements here. It got down. I'll let you-
Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
My name is Channing Lambert. I'm a resident at 10 Olivia Way. This is my home. The flooding originally started late in the fall. I believe it started in beginning of November, and as we had subsequent flooding events, separate times we would flood about eight inches. The worst it got was about in this photo here where it got 10 inches deep. At this point in time, you can see we have things here. Now, our basement is virtually empty except for some of the shelving because we can keep the stuff out of the water if it decides to flood again. We've already had to replace our water heater once. We continually maintain three pumps just in case of flooding. The main house pump actually gave out this weekend, but luckily enough, I already had backups installed. So, this issue kind of hits home for me, and I think for some of the rest of the residents because in that cul-de-sac, it got up to about 24 inches deep, which I have small children, and so.
And just another angle of Channing's flooded basement there. And then this is actually another resident at 3 Olivia Way. This is their backyard. The two pictures on the left, you can see it's completely just submerged with water. And then the far-right picture is the proposal of where the pond will go. And as you can see right now, it essentially is a pond because of the two pumps that are continuing to pump the water out into the back. And just to give additional background, we started this conversation with the town probably about in early November with the Conservation Committee, the Stormwater Committee, as well as the Planning Board, and we just want to thank you for your continued support. It's been extremely helpful as residents, and so we really appreciate that.
We have a committee report first, Ms. Collette. Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Moderator, actually, I-
Ms. Collette.
Would like to make an amendment to the motion. I move to amend Article 26 by deleting the plan reference, quote, "Overview Plan in Groton, Mass., Reedy Meadow Estates, Date February 4, 2019, Revised February 18, 2019, Prepared for Reedy Meadow LLC, Tingsborough, Massachusetts, Prepared by Land Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc." And by inserting in its place the plan reference, quote, "Easement Plan in Groton, Massachusetts, Olivia Way, Date April 9, 2019, Prepared for Reedy Meadow LLC, Tingsborough, Massachusetts, Prepared by Land Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc."
A motion to amend has been made. Is there a second? Motion to amend has been made and seconded. Ms. Collette.
The citizen's petition that was submitted in February referred to the overview plan, which was the plan of record when the petition was submitted. After about a dozen meetings with the Stormwater Committee, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board, a new survey plan was approved by the Conservation Commission and by the Stormwater Committee, which is the referenced plan. The easement area was subsequently reduced from the original plan of 35,000 square feet, and the new easement plan has an area of 15,000 square feet.
Okay. Do we have a report from the Conservation Commission? Mr. Morrison?
On April 23, 2019, the Conservation Commission voted by a majority vote to approve the plan entitled, "Land Swap Plan Prepared for Reedy Meadow LLC, Prepared by Land Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc.," dated April 23, 2019, in which a drainage easement would be granted on 15,000 square feet of town-owned land, the conservation land, under the custody of the Conservation Commission to Reedy Meadow Estates Trust. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions under Article 26? The floor is now open for debate and comments. Yes, in the back, Ms. Perkins. Yes, in the back, Ms. Perkins.
Carolyn Perkins for the Planning Board. The Planning Board held numerous discussions over the past six months in relation to the draining issues at the Reedy Meadow Estates. At its regular meeting on April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the citizen's petition to use conservation land for drainage.
Thank you. Down front, yes, sir.
Ed Perkins, Earth Removal Stormwater Advisory Committee. The drainage issues, as Scott mentioned, were brought to our attention mid-November. Since then, we've had eleven meetings, separate meetings, and two separate license engineering peer reviews, worked with the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, to construct this remediation plan. Over time, the drainage situation has improved, the roadway is no longer flooding, however, yards are still ponding and basements are still flooding. Once this article is approved, work will be done to complete the overall solution. The committee has confidence and strongly recommends approval of this, this solution as the best resolution for the Groton families, which have suffered hardships over the past six months.
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Marshall Malanson, Rad Road. I, I guess my question, this is new construction, how did we let this, I mean, I feel awful sorry for the families, but how did this construction happen? It's obviously wetlands, and it shouldn't have probably been built in the first place. So that's my question to the Planning Board. How did it happen?
For the Planning Board, Mr. Burke.
This issue represents a perfect storm of many factors coming in, in play. First, it was a subdivision that was split between two municipalities. Majority of the land is in Town of Pepperell, and the Olivia Lane is in Groton. Secondly, the property that was being developed was a former gravel pit, and the original plan seemed to be relying on certain information that was somewhat dated in terms of elevations, groundwater levels. And in a gravel situation, to determine what the exact level of high groundwater is is difficult, because the water doesn't stay in one place very long. It's, it's very porous soil. So, these are all factors that, that came into play, and I think it was exacerbated in part two during the, the fall, when the contractor was leaving filtration on the catch basins that got silted up and exacerbated the problem even further. But this solution, as indicated by the Stormwater Committee and the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, resulted in a lot of boards working together and looking at what the problems were and coming up with a remedy that was in the best interest of the town and for the residents of this, this neighborhood.
Are there questions and comments on Article twenty-six? Mr. Geiger.
I want to thank the residents of Olivia Way for their incredible patience and their willingness to work with all the departments in the town through this rather wet and, and challenging situation. They've really been good sports about this, much better than I think I could have been in such a same situation. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Ansel, did you want to speak?
Real briefly, as an attorney in the area, I received a number of calls from the people that live out of Olivia Way, asking what we can do relative to the town of Groton. I really told all of them that you live in a great town, you're going to be supported by the Planning Board, you're going to be supported by Michelle Colette and the, in her committee. Have faith, and things will come together, that this does that for them. So, thank you for all your efforts, Planning Board members and others.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article twenty-six? If not, we first need to deal with the motion to amend the main motion. You will see on the screen, the language to be deleted is crossed out, the language to be inserted is in red. The motion to amend requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion to amend passes by a unanimous vote. We now move to the main motion as amended. Is there any further debate or discussion on the main motion as amended?
As a conservationist, I think it's important to add some information here that I don't think has been stated before. So, the agreement is to allow the use of conservation land for the water to be drained onto, but that required that some other land be put into conservation, if I'm correct. And that was arranged, and all of the cost of this is being borne by the developer. Am I correct about that? So I just think it's important, we are not ignoring our, the rules about conservation land. The new conservation land happens to be in Pepperell, but as was stated, a lot, this is right on the border with Pepperell, so that's appropriate, and the developer had to pay for it.
Yes, Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, what Mrs. Pine was referring to is Article ninety-seven, which is invoked on the land, and to change the use or any of that, we're not giving up that land, we're just allowing the water and a pond be placed on it. The land that we're going to be getting, both in Pepperell and in Groton, has to be as good or better than the land that we're giving up in three areas. It has to be better than as far as price goes, as far as conservation goes, and as far as the value of the land goes. So it met all of those three criteria, which is why the Conservation Commission examined that very closely. We made sidewalks on it and have voted to support this.
You have before you the main motion as amended. Are there any further comments or questions? Requires a majority vote. Seeing no one rise to speak, the Chair will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, main motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the main motion is passed by a majority vote. We now go to Articles twenty-seven through thirty-six. Mrs. Minugian.
I move that the town vote to combine for consideration Articles twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six of the warrant for this town meeting, and that the town take affirmative action on said articles as set forth in the motions in the town meeting information handout, without debate, and in accordance with the action proposed under each motion provided. However, that if any voter, prior to the taking of the vote, requests the right to debate a specific article, then said article shall be removed from this motion and acted upon in the ordinary course of business.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Before we get to that, the Chair would like to clarify, under the advice of Town Council, the Chair heard a two-thirds majority on Article twenty-six, the main motion as amended. Ladies and gentlemen, you now have before you the consent agenda. As a consent agenda, it will be voted up or down with no debate, and it requires a majority vote. Every voter has the right to remove an article from the consent agenda and have it separately voted and debated. The Chair will now read the articles, numbers, and names. If anyone wishes to hold, they should say hold and raise their hand. Once we have our consent agenda, there will be no debate, we will simply vote it up or down. Again, you should call hold if you wish to separately debate it. Article twenty-seven, Current Year Line Item Transfers. Article twenty-eight, Appropriate, Appropriate Money to Offset Snow and Ice Deficit. Article twenty-nine, Transfer Within Water Enterprise Fund. Article thirty, Transfer Within Sewer Enterprise Fund. Article thirty-one, Transfer Within Cable Enterprise Fund. Article thirty-two, Prior Year Bills. Article thirty-three, Debt Service for Serendon Farms. Article thirty-four, Establishing Limits for the Various Revolving Funds. Article thirty-five, Accept Law, Increasing Real Estate Tax Exemption. Article thirty-six, Accept Provisions of MGL Chapter Fifty-Nine, Subsection Five. Hearing no holds. We now have our consent agenda of Articles twenty-seven through thirty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda passes with a unanimous vote. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dissolve this Springtown meeting. It has been moved and seconded to dissolve the Springtown meeting, requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is dissolved.